Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council Study Session for April 2nd, 2024. I'll call this meeting to order. We have two items on our agenda this evening. Excuse me, I have asked that item two be presented first, the discussion on the Office of Digital Government. The, our friends from MAG have been alerted so that they know not to come until a little bit later. And they also know that they may have to wait, or we may be finished. And we will take a little break until they're ready for their presentation. So I will go ahead and ask Patrick, I believe, for his presentation. Thanks, Patrick.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mayor, is there preference? I can sit here and present the information, or I can go down to the podium?
I'm fine with you sitting there. It's study session, so I think that's fine for study session, Patrick.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and bring up the slides. Okay, so I'll start with, back to the very beginning, in 2011, to set the stage where things were, and then take you through the evolution of the department and where it is today, and a little bit of a look forward into where things are heading in the very near future. But back in 2011 was a period of substantial change for cities and towns, and how they communicated with and engaged with residents. And the old forms of communication, print media, mailers, flyers, advertisements, had really given way and gone by the wayside to the new world of social media, and the various platforms that were much faster, much cheaper, much quicker, and much more effective in engaging with residents. And there's been a lot, there's been an evolution in those platforms. New, new platforms, new technologies come and rise, and then fall out of favor. And so there's the constant evaluation of the platform, the demographics on the platform, to make sure we're as targeted as we can be. But it really had, it was an entirely new space. And the town had very little presence at all. We had a website, and we had a Facebook account, and we had a Twitter account, and they weren't being actively managed. And so in some ways, it was kind of a blank slate for us to go forward from there. In addition to the world of social media, there was a recognition of data and data sets and data storytelling as being a big, big component, and one that would continue to grow with community engagement, and communicating and providing information to our community through these modern formats and channels. So from there, after establishing department, and this is the mission statement, and you should have a copy of this, we can send it to all of you. I wasn't going to read the entire mission statement, but the mission statement for the department. And then the department supports the town-wide communications for all 17 departments, including our major departments, Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, Economic Development, and Public Works. Some departments, because of their size and the amount of information that is handled, have dedicated staff members solely to them, such as Police and Fire and Parks and Recreation. Others share resources across the organization. The population we're serving, and this continues to change, and we continue to evaluate this as well, but we're about 288,000 people and growing. About $580,000, our median, single-family home sales price, and that continues to go up. Roughly half of our residents have a bachelor's degree or higher. Our median household income, second highest in the region, only to Paradise Valley, at 105.7,000, and still a relatively young population at 35.3. Another thing that benefits our approach to engagement and communication is 96.3% of our households have a broadband internet subscription, which is a very high statistic, and one that's very beneficial to us and our population in having access to all the benefits that that provides them. And about one-third of our population is actually under the age of 13, which again is a very young population, or a large and young population. And there are platforms and social media channels that attract the, or more prevalently used by the younger generation as well, which is important for us to understand as we target communications towards various groups. And so our goal has always been, from the very beginning, to meet the residents where they are online. Newspapers are still here, magazines and different forums are still here. It's not that those channels no longer exist, they do, but they're not the predominant source people go to. It's a, it's a much more scattered offering of where they're going to get information, whether it be Facebook, whether it be a newspaper, in an online format, whether it be Instagram. It's a wide variety of where things are located, but the majority of that's now on all online. And so we need to meet them where they are, or we will not be effective. And so looking at our department in comparison to other departments in the valley, the column in dark, the black, is the things that we do, as well as other cities, very similar things in nature. The things that are in orange, the bars in orange, are things that our department does that the other cities do not do, which is pretty substantial in all of these key aspects to communication and engagement with our residents, which is why they are housed within the Gilbert Digital Department. So what sets Gilbert's Office of Digital Government apart from our peers is our level of engagement. And looking at some of the numbers, total number of follows across all our platforms, Instagram, Facebook, X, 400,000 followers. In fiscal year '23, we had 37 million social media impressions. Take that by monthly, it's about 3.4 million social media impressions monthly. And then engagements, almost 200,000 monthly engagements across all our platforms, which you'll see in a second against some of our peer agencies, is quite substantial. So our benchmark cities that we look to benchmark ourselves against, you see we are over 150,000 engagements. And across the bottom, you'll also see population. Next to us, next closest, Irvine, California, just over 100,000. Then Reno, Nevada, at 100,000. Mesa, a little bit below that. Chandler, just under 50,000. Austin, Texas, which has over a million residents, and is generally viewed as a pretty tech-savvy, forward-facing city, is well under, probably, it looks like they're around 25,000 engagements. And then Avondale, Arizona, locally, right around 25,000 engagements as well. So when it comes to the effectiveness of the work they do, you can see that they far outpace our peer communities that we benchmark ourselves against. In digital engagement, video views, fiscal year '23, we had 5.2 million video views. Website visits, we had 15 million 3-1-1 requests. We had over 21,000 requests through 3-1-1. Not only has that been a platform that helps us streamline the efficiency of things that are reported and getting them fixed, like streetlights out, potholes that need to be filled, kids going fast down a road on a, on a regular basis. That data we collect on that also helps us analyze how we can allocate resources. And so if we see that we've got increased calls for potholes, or increased calls for lights that are out, we could also equate that to how many lights can an average crew replace on a daily basis, take that out on an annual basis, and use that as another gauge of when it may be time to consider adding another position based on real data we've got on the number of times we're handling those kind of service calls. And then the newsletter subscriber has, has been one of our best, or one of our high-performing areas. We have over 40,000 subscribers, and we've got a 52% average open rate. Industry average is right at 29%. So we're doing very well in the number of subscribers, as well as the people who will actually open it when they receive that email in their inbox. So looking at our department amongst the region in comparison to our peers, and Gilbert's on the far left, and then it goes all the way over. Starting at the top is the number of full-time employees, then the total budget. And then for other cities and agencies, they have additional personnel within different areas, and there's additional costs tied to that. And then again, across the bottom, we've got the population to get comparison of the size of the community they're serving. So in Gilbert, we have 13 full-time employees, and the total budget for '23, '24 was just over $1.8 million. Chandler, which is a community that's very similar to Gilbert in size and makeup, has 17 full-time employees in that department, plus an additional 10 employees that are doing the same kind of work in other departments that Gilbert's team does, giving him roughly 27 employees in this space. And if you take the additional cost, the, the base cost from their department, as well as the additional cost, you're right at about $5 million for similar services in Chandler. Scottsdale, and you can go across the line, Scottsdale's about 24 employees, a total of just under or just over $4, $4 million. Mesa, about 33 employees, about $3.8 million. Tempe, 15 employees, a cost of about $2 million. Phoenix, roughly 39 employees, a cost of just about, just over $6 million. And then Glendale, about 14 and a half employees, at a cost of about $2.5 million. And again, you can see the population totals that run along the bottom for comparative purposes. And then through the years, they've been recognized for a lot of the great work they do through social media engagement, through their video production efforts. They have been recognized locally, nationally, and even internationally for some of the great work they've done. I think virtually every city within this region has come to visit Gilbert and learn more about what we do and how we do it. Many of them have created chief digital officers positions within their communities and modeled their departments after ours. And we have had countless cities nationally reach out, as well as make onsite visits to learn more about what we're doing. And just within the last year, we had Georgetown University, Abilene, Texas, and Franklin, Tennessee, all reach out to us, inquire, and learn more about what we're doing and how we're doing it to take back some best practices to their organizations. So with that, that's a high-level overview of the department, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions or comments for Patrick at this time?
I had a huge problem trying to find the mission statement. Can you bring back that mission statement?
Sure.
I looked for hours trying to find it.
Right here.
Okay, it started in 2011. What was its original name?
It was Digital Government, right from the very beginning. I believe the town, when I got here, was just the Communications Department.
The, how, when I'm looking at this, so it works with each town department. Is that how it became engaged in so many different things that have been divisive? Like when I hear things about people's social media being followed and turned over to HR and things like that? Is that how they're engaged with other departments?
No, and there was allegations of monitoring of social media accounts, and along with some other things. And, and as many of you were not here, but at the time I brought in an outside firm to do a full review of all those matters and investigation, and they found no basis for any of those allegations or those thoughts, and completely exonerated the town and the department of any allegations of monitoring of social media accounts.
But there were things that were turned over from those conversations to HR, weren't there?
So I can't discuss any personnel issues, per se. Anytime something violates our rules, whatever that may be, and in whatever format, if it's a violation that happens over social media, and someone reports that, or someone brings that to the attention of the individuals that service social media accounts, then their responsibility is to turn it over to HR and whatever director, for whatever department that is, so they can follow up as appropriate pursuant to our personnel rules.
So you're saying it's, it wasn't an activism, per se, it was a reaction completely?
That's correct. That either they were tagged in posts, or people brought it to the town's attention.
All right, so regardless of who was speaking, whether it was somebody from Gilbert Digital and somebody from, somebody's wife, let's say, that was wholly as a reaction and not, not an action upon their part?
I can't, I can't respond to any specific incidents. I don't recall the one you're mentioning. But again, their job through engagement with our residents, if someone tags us in an account, their job is to go see why we've been tagged. Do they have a question about something? Do, do they have a service concern so that, or do they need information on something that may be happening? And their job is to get that to them or be responsive to them. So again, if something came through that appeared on its face to be personnel-related in nature, their responsibility would then be to provide that to HR and to the director.
Right, and then with engaging each department, I know that they were at some point engaged with Economic Development. That person was replaced later with a marketing person, is that correct?
Yeah, so when we kind of brought this all together, Economic Development had a position that did a lot that there was overlap with the type of work being done in digital government. So that position was brought in as well. After a while, we realized that really there wasn't a good alignment there, because a lot of the work, and the nature of the work that position was doing was traveling to trade shows, business development, generation, contact lead generation and that, which was not a typical role for the digital government team and those communications and marketing professionals. And so the decision was made to separate that back out and just leave it in Economic Development.
And when did each department get an embedded person, do you know?
It grew through the years. As the organization grew and the community grew and the needs grew. It didn't happen all at once, but as the, the sheer demand and volume of requests for information, materials that had to be put out grew, we added positions as necessary through the years.
And those positions were embedded in, let's say, Police or Fire?
Correct.
Because to me, Fire is probably the most trusted brand in the world. And we're, replace their voice with someone else's.
Yeah, you know, we didn't look at it as replacing a voice. And when you mentioned brand, and I think that's important, because the town as a whole has a brand. And when the residents look at us, they look at one government serving them in many different ways, police protection, fire protection, parks and recreation programs and services, water treatment and wastewater and solid waste. And so as we approached this, just like any company that is very careful to maintain the appearance of their brand and have a coordinated approach to brand management, it was the same mindset that drove us. We wanted to ensure, while Fire has a service line and a brand that is, is unique and different from Police, it's all part of the Gilbert brand, and we want to make sure we have consistent messaging and branding, so our residents aren't left confused as to who's serving them, or any disconnect that may occur or appear to occur between departments.
I'd suggest there's a disconnect in representation. I would think that the divisiveness that I've seen from some people in departments from the public is because there's only one voice. And it's, it reflects in things like feeling that they're watched, feeling that they can't speak, seeing only a perspective, one perspective, projected through one lens. I mean, is that, when you replace, let's say, the most trusted brand's mouthpiece with one that's homogenized into 10 other mouthpieces, is that truly the best way to do it?
Well, I wouldn't say, so Fire, for the example you're using, has a dedicated full-time employee within Fire, and that individual works very closely with Chief and the personnel in Fire to develop that messaging. When you think about the coordination of efforts, we just want to make sure if the message coming out of Fire was part of a larger issue going on in the community. Let's say the protests that are occurring, or did occur from July through November of the last presidential cycle, Fire was a big part of that, as was Police, as was Public Works. And we had multiple different divisions involved in that effort. And while Fire was providing specific services, they were part of the larger effort on the town as a whole. And so that embedded position still coordinates, and, and the Fire Chief still signs off on and approves anything before it actually goes out in whatever channel or form, whether it's a quote going to a newspaper reporter, or whether it's a post going on a social media channel, that individual within that department is still heavily involved in the final decisions on what happens.
How does that relate to, let's say, the mayor trying to make a statement publicly over the last four months, and her not having access to social media in that respect? Our social media, not hers, ours.
I think I would defer to the mayor. We certainly try to support the mayor in every way we can, and the mayor does have direct access to her channels personally.
Her personal one, yes.
I'll, I have direct access to the Gilbert AZ Mayor Instagram and Twitter accounts. I don't have direct access to any of the accounts that are run by the Gilbert Digital team. Sorry, still call them Gilbert Digital, that's their original name. You asked a few minutes ago. So if I did a post, which I did, they went out on the Gilbert AZ Mayor channels. Period.
Did you feel you got enough message out? Or was there resistance in getting your message out where you feel it should have been?
I didn't, but I don't really, I don't think that that's pertinent to this conversation tonight. I think the things that you're really looking for is what the department does overall, and not specific issues of how we can maybe improve that.
Well, I think it's, it's showing whether it's what parts of it are working and what parts aren't working.
Yeah, and I think they learned-
My personal feeling is you were failed. That you didn't fail, you were failed. And I think you agree with me.
I don't think, I don't think that that was the Office of Digital Government.
Okay.
That's how I'll answer that.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't, I, I don't think it was on that office that that happened.
Yeah, I thought there was resistance to you making a public statement.
Not just from that, not just from that office.
From what other offices may ask.
But not pertinent to this conversation.
Okay, interesting, okay. The, you know, I, I look at this, and when there's smoke, there's fire. It's almost always there. And I'm not, I see things that people don't want to speak about. I'm curious as to how, so, since it's involved in so many different departments, and on the, the org chart, they're above Assistant Town Managers. Technically, I mean, it's, it showed above the Assistant Town Managers on my org chart that was handed to me.
Yeah, they're, they are not above. It just means they're a direct reporting relationship to me. They're not above Assistant Town Managers.
So when they're involved in having that voice, that, that one voice going out, is that the voice that goes and says, our hiring practices, what makes us attractive to other towns or other businesses that are trying to locate across the country? How does that work?
So their job is to work with the departments on whatever their needs are, and, and do that in the best manner possible. Recently, just last weekend, we had the LPGA tournament, and they worked with the Tourism Division within the Office of Economic Development to create a commercial for the town that went out, that was very well done. And so along those lines, that's what they do for each department and whatever their needs may be.
Yeah, no, I actually sent you an email on that, because I thought it was very well-produced.
Yeah.
You know, and I forget the name of the gentleman that produced it.
Oscar.
Oscar did a great job on that. You know, I was watching at a cigar bar, and all of a sudden I see a commercial for our town, and it was a very good commercial. Because I keep seeing these things that stick out, and it's, it's, it sounds so good that you have one voice, but I see voices that aren't said. And, and it, it goes into those things like the Municipal Quality Index. Like I know there was a push for that. Where did that, did that come from Gilbert Digital?
Yeah, so let me, let me say, I would, I would characterize it as a coordinated voice. Not one voice, but a coordinated voice. Because again, there are times when there are multiple departments involved in an effort or an undertaking, but in different ways, and we just want to make sure it's coordinated. When it comes to the Municipal Quality Index, no, they had nothing to do with that. That's something that comes in every year to each city. They ask for responses to questions based on things that they track, but it has nothing to do with digital government.
Okay. Interesting, okay. Let me think for a minute, if anybody has questions.
Councilmember Kaproski? Thanks, Patrick, for the presentation. I thought it was really good to see the overview and breakdown, because I know that we have had some piecemeal presentations about the Office of Digital Government. And it was nice to see everything kind of organized in this one space. The digital government that I've seen from Gilbert is, as, as you mentioned, it's online media. When it's, when it's in that space, it's earned. So that means that we don't have to pay for it when we earn our own following. have to pay for it when we earn our own following and influence. And I think from even the engagements that are shown, there's a extrapolation of touchpoints with the community that is even bigger than what was there. So for me, the low cost and the high value are very important, because I think we're being good stewards of the money that we are using for that office. There's always a request for having more printed materials or postcards, and that's very expensive with all of the postage, and I think that we've done a good job of balancing that and incorporating some of those materials with some of the key important stakeholder outreach that we've been doing recently. So I do appreciate that. I really like the direction that the Office of Digital Government has gone. My concern right now is with the status of our current channels, the following, my concern is how do we maintain that? Because you have to stay innovative and fresh in that space, and year to year, it can go from Instagram to Facebook to LinkedIn. And so how are we keeping up with that? How do we plan to keep up with that in the future?
That's an excellent question, Councilmember Kaprowski. We do use some analytics tools, Sprout Social, to help us analyze the platforms and engagements and age demographics to get a feel for if something's trending a certain way. There's a lot of national information and articles you can track as well in regards to platforms that are starting to kind of peter out and new ones that are coming on the scene. It's a constant process of evaluation, and as I said, if we have something, a Parks and Recreation Program that's targeted towards kids, like our Capow superhero run, we will target those platforms that have a larger or a younger age group demographic that are on them. But there are some, social media was just a monumental change in the way governments engage with their communities, and that has evolved and gone through many different iterations with different platforms and apps. One minute it's popular, the next minute it's gone. But I think the next big impact will be artificial intelligence and how that impacts augmented assistance that are much more robust and capable than chatbots and the like, and how we manage those when it comes to the veracity of video and stories and photos. I think that will be our next big space to pivot into and really get ahead of to the benefit of our community, to ensure our residents know they're getting accurate, reliable, and authentic information.
Any other, Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Patrick, I appreciated the presentation. A couple of things that I just wanted to mention is the importance of the foundation that our digital government department has set, which has resulted in the amazing engagements that we've done when we've gone out for not only our general plan, our Parks and Rec plan, and even our Northwest Corridor. We, you know, I believe we shifted the culture a little bit to meet people where they are, and I think that's kind of the foundation that we've set, and I'm looking forward to where we're going next. I know through our communications subcommittee, and I know that you all are evaluating some of this, but one of them is exploring a website update, which may be a little more user-friendly, which I think is important to all of us. We also talked about the 3-1-1 app and how we can use that to push more information instead of just receive information. I think that may be an upgrade, but something we're exploring. Also, when we were at the Northwest Corridor meeting, this is an older part of the community, and I noticed that when we sent out the postcard, we had an older demographic that showed up, and so they appreciated that. And so I totally understand it being expensive, but what I've noticed is that we use it when it makes sense, it's just not an every time. So, you know, combining that, I think, is really important. You know, campaigning now and then to get people to opt in to different things. I talked to a lot of people, and I said, "Hey, you know, did you know you could get..." We would send you an email notifying you of the next agenda, they just don't know, and so, you know, letting them know that. And I love our storytelling, and I'd really like to be able to get back to more of that as we move forward. So I think that all in all, we're doing a great job in getting our information out and looking forward to the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Tilke. You know, and that is, back to Councilman Kaprowski's point, the future, it will continue to be on data and data analytics and data storytelling. We had a phenomenal data storyteller, unfortunately, one of our favorite local corporations. Deloitte stole her from us, which was not appreciated, but we have been actively trying to fill that role. It's a very unique niche, but it's one we're going to continue to, until we do get it filled, because data storytelling, this data that we're collecting and the information and what it means for our community is just of critical importance.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Patrick. Just one question, I heard a little bit of the discussion with Councilmember Torgerson talking about having employees embedded in the departments versus having their own independent PIO in that department. Are you, are you satisfied with how that's working now, having them embedded like that?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Anderson, sorry, I was called you Councilman Anderson. Vice Mayor Anderson, yes, and one thing to note within police and fire, there is still a sworn position within each of those departments that is also actively involved, a police PIO and a fire PIO that's actively involved working with that individual, that's the embed position. But I think all in all, it works well. As with anything, we've got a lot of service lines, IT, purchasing, we've got a lot of service lines, internal service lines, that support all of the departments, have embedded positions or just have individuals who are identified specifically support them. And from time to time, there's things to work out and things that are not as smooth of interactions, and so we're constantly looking for process improvement, but I think all in all, it's served the purpose we hoped it would very well.
Any other, Councilmember Banjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Patrick, for the presentation. Being the liaison for Parks and Rec, I was in a meeting, the advisory board last month, and the consulting company that we were working with for the survey mentioned that we were, our engagement was incredible, 60,000 plus.
Yeah.
Compared to the next biggest city, I think it was Austin, with 30,000. And I really liked the way that they made that engagement fun, you know, for the kids to get the parents to get involved in that, and they did a super job on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Banjivani. Eva Kirschbaum on the digital team worked closely, Robert has it, Carmona has a very talented team in Parks, and they work together jointly to develop an approach to the engagement we needed to get that feedback as we continue to design the build-out of our park system, but doing it in a manner where we can get as much possible engagement as possible, and they created a very fun and unique way to do that.
I don't want to do a pun, but they knocked it out of the park.
They did.
You need to pay more than a dollar. I would say that that consultant came in and said they were going to double the highest number that they had received, which was around 30,000 participation, and they were able to accomplish that in Gilbert, which is just astounding when we were only getting about 300 responses, 600 responses, I think the largest response we had gotten on a poll in Gilbert was a garbage response with about eight, I see Jen Harris nodding her head, I know what's going on.
Do not mess with people's garbage.
It was over 8,000 people that responded to a poll on garbage, because garbage is a very important issue in Gilbert. Any other comments or questions, or Councilmember Torgerson?
Well, I'm just curious, because I know Chuck and I had asked for some storytelling regarding the water treatment plant, the impending increase in costs, what there was to do about it, and it, we were told a few things, and it fell on deaf ears in the end and ended up being, it's still problematic to this day. I still answer questions about that, and we were told there was going to be something that would happen to help us out here as council members to explain exactly why. It never came to fruition even close. What is a, what is a pattern, what is a path to get something said that needs to be said?
Councilmember Torgerson, so anytime that you feel that we haven't been responsive to get something to you, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or any one of our assistants. I know we put together a very robust campaign that included just about every channel and form of communication that exists, from mailers to newspaper articles, to flyers, to social media, to inserts in the utility bill. I believe we also created a one-page or a front and back one-page document for the council to use with the main components and need-to-know information so that you could talk and engage with our residents who may have questions about this. But if, so I'm not aware of anything that wasn't done, but anytime you feel like there is something that you haven't received, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Chuck, you recall what we had talked about?
Yeah, I recall a couple of those conversations, yeah, but I, you know, I'm not on the town's social media stuff, I honestly need to educate myself on what they are, but, you know, anytime you raise someone's utility bills or taxes or anything like that, it's almost impossible to reach everybody, to educate them. You know, I hope we can engage even more in the future when these things happen, so we're not stuck with a lot of questions that, you know, we should answer, and we do answer them, but, you know, I don't know if there's certain rules that we can or can't do to push an agenda forward when we need to raise fees or raise taxes.
Hopefully, we won't be raising taxes. Councilmember Buckley?
That's okay, thank you. Thank you, Patrick, for the presentation. It was great seeing all those numbers and what the digital department actually does and the reactions that we get from them. I personally feel like it's a must-have department. I, even when-
You okay, Patrick?
Yeah, sorry.
Can you hear me?
No, yeah, sorry, he was coughing, I'm sorry. He's okay.
Oh, did I interrupt someone? Oh, okay.
No, Chuck was coughing.
Oh, oh, okay.
I was just asking if he was okay, sorry.
Well, his coughing and my sneezing, we're just interacting here.
A match pair.
Yeah, but, you know, even when social media first came about, I was the first one to jump on board with all of that, and there's, I think, I feel there's a huge value to the residents to have this, and for their, for us putting information out and them coming back, and a lot of this we've already said, but I think it's important to reiterate that. I know there's been some talk about maybe having the digital department monitored. Do you see any need for that? All of what I've heard and read is from three years ago, and I just thought I would just ask you what you think about that.
Councilman Buckley, there was a number of things from three years ago that were raised, and that's why I brought in an outside firm to just do a full and complete objective evaluation, and they did not find any basis for some of the assertions that were made. I think our digital department, like every department, receives proper oversight and guidance through regular interactions and evaluation of work product and evaluation of feedback that we receive, and I don't think there's anything further that is warranted or necessary for them, unlike any other department in our organization.
Right, right, well, I kind of have the same feeling, but I just wanted to put that out there because, you know, it's been out here and there.
Yeah.
I think probably, you know, that's about it for me, I just wanted to get that clarified in public.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Torgerson? Oh, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Just very quickly, this is to follow on the discussion about whether we're raising taxes or whether we're dealing with impact fees and so forth, that's kind of the, it's the stuff we want to share with the community, but it's the stuff that's tough to deal with sometimes. But I was just thinking that I've seen other communities that take bond projects, for instance, CIP projects, and they will put a sign of some kind at that that's explaining, "This is where your tax dollars are going in the bond that we passed." Do we do that on digital now? If not, could we do something like that?
We are doing that now. So the last bond issuance that we had in 2007, those projects have all gone through to completion. The bond projects funded from the last transportation ballot issue are just now finishing up design and moving into construction phase, and we are putting up a signage that basically saying, "Your bond dollars at work, and thank you."
Thanks, Mayor. If I could just piggyback on what Jim and Chuck were mentioning, I'm trying to figure out where the gap was, because I know there was a lot of information that went out there, and I thought that the staff had sent council an email outlining some of the things that they were going to be doing. Perhaps maybe just an extra step, if we could maybe get links or something that says, "Hey, this is an important issue that you wanted to know how we're communicating with", if it could just come to us that way, because I don't always see everything on social media, I have to admit, and so perhaps I missed it, but that might close that gap that Jim was talking about, that maybe he felt he wasn't followed up with right away, and so that might just help. Thanks.
Thank you. Happy to.
Councilmember Tilke, I actually asked to close a gap to when we, for example, recently, we've had an email from the chief that he was responding to a story, and then we get comments about the story, but we've never seen the story. So I've asked if they could send us the story, and it's easier if it comes in a PDF form sometimes, and not just a link, because some are subscription, and yes, we have memberships, but it makes it harder if you're out on your phone like I am and not at my computer. And so I've asked that they try and fill those gaps and make sure that we're getting that information. And I just want to say that, you know, I've been around a long time working with the digital team, and yes, I had an issue with an employee doing something that they should not have done. It was a one-off, it was not led by the department, it was not led by the director of that department. She and I hugged it out the day she left. And I will say that this department works hard. I think that we can make some improvements, and I will say that you have a different council now than you've ever had before. You're getting, you're getting questions and comments and requests from council members that you've never had before. We've always had council members that really had fairly robust social media on their own that they were using, and we don't necessarily have that now, that these council members can use to tell a story about something that they're interested in. So they're looking for an outlet to have as a council member, and if I go and look at the other channels for all of the other cities and towns, and I hang out with these mayors at many different events, MAGS sitting here waiting to present, I'm at MAGS three times a month with mayors from the valley, and we talk about things that are going on. If I go look at their social media, I see stories about their individual mayors, I see stories about their council members, and I think that Gilbert can do better with that, with the items that the council members are all interested in. We're not districted, so it makes it a little harder, so you're not going to say, "Come to a coffee in District 1," like I've seen in other cities and towns, but I would make that for a recommendation. And I think that the council has to realize that it has to be fairly done too at the same time, that it can't always be just Councilmember Banjivani and Torgerson doing these things all the time. It has to be fairly done and evenly done amongst the council members, and the mayor does have a separate, I hate it, X account versus Twitter. I'm still probably going to say Twitter for 20 years. X account and an Instagram account, and it is important to be able to communicate on the town accounts when there is something that needs to be shared to the whole community. But like Councilmember Tilke said, from Tuesday evening, from last Wednesday, Wednesday evening when we were at the Northwest Corridor meeting, and the residents there are a little bit older demographic for our community, the, that neighborhood is an older demographic, that area is an older demographic, and a couple of them said, "How come there were people at other meetings than we didn't know about these meetings?" And they said, "Because they follow our social media channels, they receive our electronic newsletter, they're getting emails from the community about these updates, and you can get those." get those, too." Well, we got a postcard this time, and I said, "Well, I know about five years ago for us to send an election postcard out cost us about $45,000. So today, I'm sure it's more. This was a smaller area, but if we were trying to reach the town of 93,000 residences, I think is about how many homes we have in Gilbert, that would be a huge cost to be able to do." So social media is even more important, and another reason that social media is important for this community is because of the age of the demographic of this community. I, I mean, I've been joking for the past five years that the town's getting younger as I get older. I don't like that, but, um, you know, the average age of the community is like 33 and a half right now. Those folks live here. You know where I live, and I'm not 35, three and a half? Here. I am on this 24/7, and, um, I don't read newspapers, sorry, Tom. Um, I use social media. Had to, had to.
We love you, Tom.
We do like Tom. We do like Tom. So I think that there are ways that we can make this work and make this work together, and because we have a different council than we've ever had before, that they can offer some insight on to be able to tell their own stories and to get that information out onto social media. Any other comments?
The, uh, I don't really, I don't feel comfortable. I do not feel comfortable. There's something that's rubbing me very wrong. Uh, I can't get it out of the back of my head, but what can we do so that it no longer, the perception, let's call it, that we have, uh, an agendized department or a divisive department, or whatever it's been called, in multiple meetings? What can we do to heal that?
I'm going to take that, Patrick. The perceptions being created by a few of you, the perception doesn't exist. I mean, the perception exists in a few people's minds. It is not reality. The posts that I saw, I read, I think as many of the documents as I could that were furnished for the Judicial Watch in 2021. I went through those, and there are as many complaints from residents and employees about each other, using social media in a way that they didn't feel was becoming of a staff member, as there were being pointed out about staff members that were using the social media in a way that wasn't becoming of a staff member. Those staff members that were using social media were doing it to purposely push the envelope, and they were tagging the town. And I'll tell you, I followed those people on social media. When I say I live on this, I live on this. I think even the members of the digital team will tell you, "I'm probably very proficient on this." I have taught some of them how to airdrop pictures from phone to phone. So I am very proficient on social media when it comes to that stuff. And I will tell you that I was seeing those posts, I know that the town was tagged in them. If you're purposely tagging the town, it's because you are trying to make a statement, you are trying to, to make somebody see what you're doing, and it was unbecoming of the people doing it. And the people that are still coming in and complaining about it are doing it to continue to create an issue that doesn't exist. And we need to move past this. It is time to, and I've said it before, Councilmember Torgerson, pull your big girl panties up and move on, right? It is time for us to do that. This doesn't exist, it's been looked at, it's been investigated by an outside group, and we need to move on. My four cents versus two cents, I guess. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Can you teach me how to airdrop later?
I can teach you how to airdrop. I probably can. I, I'll tell you, I'm going to tell you a funny story about social media. The team taught us how to use, oh my God, what was the name of it? Periscope? Periscope? Oh, see, Jen Harrison's in the back there. Um, we were all using Periscope, and the team taught us how to use Periscope, and about two weeks later, I know a staff member went to them and said, "Hey, can you teach me how to use Periscope?" And they're like, "It's not being used anymore. There's something new out there." And that's what happens, and that's how quickly it happens. We have seen more changes in technology and apps and social media in the past eight years since I've been sitting here as a council member and mayor than I think we've seen, you know, in my lifetime. We have seen more changes, and that's what this group does, and that's what it does well, and they need to stay on top of it so that the rest of us, and however many employees we have today, full-time, part-time, 1,800, don't have to worry about that, that they're the team handling that for the community. Any other comments? Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. Um, next, we have our friends here from MAG to do a presentation on, or discussion on air quality with Maricopa Association of Governments. Sorry, I hate to use acronyms when people might not know what I'm referring to. So the Maricopa Association of Governments, and I see Rob Boer coming to the podium to introduce our guests. Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, as, as the mayor mentioned, I'll, I'll be quick here with the introduction. I know you guys have a lot to discuss tonight, a long night. With us, we do have representatives from the Maricopa Association of Governments, which you may have, uh, different, um, levels of, of familiarity with, but Maricopa Association of Governments, or MAG, as, as we commonly refer to them, um, they are, they serve as the regional planning agency for the metropolitan Phoenix area. So they're probably most widely recognized for, um, their work in, in transportation planning, but as you, Mayor, may not know, MAG actually covers a lot of specialty areas, and, uh, they do so by, um, among other, uh, among other things, by, by bringing us together as cities and towns on committees, um, both policy committees that, that develop , um, policies in, in the different areas, as well as technical advisory committees that really, um, are, are, are city and town experts that come together to, to develop programs and, and, um, share information on, on various subjects. So one of those key specialty areas is air quality. So MAG serves as the lead air quality planning agency for this region, um, but, but this, uh, I guess this area is a little bit unique, um, because their policy authority or, or flexibility is, is limited, since air quality is regulated by federal law and other agencies that, that, um, enforce and implement air quality measures. So it's a very technical and complicated subject they're here to discuss with you all tonight. Um, as, as they will explain, it's also a very important subject because of how much of a significant impact it can have on things like, uh, economic development and transportation in the region, um, which, which I'm sure you'll hear from them. But, um, so finally, just want to introduce the, the three representatives that we have here, uh, joining us from MAG this evening, and hand it over to them for their presentation. So, um, with us tonight is MAG Executive Director Ed Zirker, um, MAG's Chief of Staff Audra Kester-Thomas, and Matt Poppin, who was recently promoted to MAG's Environmental Director. So, Ed and team, if you want to come on up.
This podium? Ed, will you please take this podium?
Oh.
Yeah, thanks. And Matt?
Sorry.
Thanks for joining us this evening. Matt, we'll have you over here with Ed, too.
There we go.
Rob, can you, yeah, and Chuck, that mic off.
Okay, and I'll pass this off to Matt. Actually, I'll just give it to you.
Okay.
And you can click through for me.
Thank you.
There you go. We'll get this all figured out.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Uh, members of the council, it's good to be here with you. As Rob said, I'm Ed Zirker, I'm the Executive Director of the Maricopa Association of Governments, and Rob gave you a bit of an orientation, but just to kind of put it up on the screen in terms of a map, MAG is 32-member agencies. That is all 27 cities and towns in Maricopa County and several in Panal County. Both counties, Maricopa and Panal, and then our three native nations comprise our 32 members. It is a council of governments and a metropolitan planning organization, which have different meanings, but basically, it's the place where all the, all the regional cities come together with one vote each to have conversations and discuss issues of regional importance. I say problems that have no borders, things like transportation and air quality. Uh, and your mayor, Mayor Peterson, serves on the regional council as well as on the executive committee, but you also have many and many of your staff in on our technical committees, helping with things like traffic and intelligent transportation, and yes, air quality, and some human services planning. Uh, and we see Rob and Amy probably a lot more than they wish we would see them down there, helping us out with that. So this is the, the MAG region, as you can see. It is, as I said, 32-member agencies by land area. We kind of forget how large we are relative, but this land area is as big as the state of New Jersey, and by population, if we were a state, we'd be the 25th-largest state in the United States. So it's, it's a massive scale, uh, represented by all the mayors and leaders of the town. Next slide, please. So our role in air quality, as the air quality planning agency, is first, we are the lead air quality planning for Maricopa and portions of Panal. It is governed by the Clean Air Act. That is the federal law that governs this, and we all are operating in some form or another under the Clean Air Act. The United States Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, they, uh, regulate and enforce the federal Clean Air Act. MAG develops the regional plan to comply with the Clean Air Act. The state of Arizona develops some state rules, and they enforce and adopt parts of our plan for Arizona. So, uh, things like the, the emissions check that we go through with our cars, that comes from, as, if you go there, you're, uh, going to the, uh, Arizona DEQ. And Maricopa County and Panal County separately, they have their own sets of rules that they also enforce and permits for business. As Rob said, this really becomes an issue for business. As we talk about air quality, we first want to focus on the fact that amazing work has been done in this region by everyone coming together to, uh, make air quality better. And we'll take a look at the next slide. This was put together actually by our friends at Mar, well, sorry, the, first of all, this is the boundaries, uh, slot, the next slide. The boundaries of what we're going to talk about, uh, basically of MAG, are also a boundary of where we have an ozone problem. The, the bright fuchsia, bright pink, that's the boundary for air quality in, in terms of ozone. There are other ozone attainment areas that have to do with dust and, and fine, fine particles, but we're going to focus today on, um, on ozone primarily. We will talk a little about, about PM 2.5. Next slide. So if you talk about, when we talk about our message, it is one of great success, but more work to do. Isn't that how it always seems to be? This was put together by our friends at Maricopa County. If you start at the top and you think, for the last 34 years, since 1990, which is on the far left of the slide, to the present day, what's happened? The gross domestic product of our region has gone, gone up five and a half times, economic growth. We all feel that. The next one, the orange line, which is their vehicle miles traveled and population have about doubled. The population for the last 34 years about double, vehicle miles just a little bit ahead of that, so there's a lot of activity, there's a lot more people, there's a lot more traffic, and there's about 50% more energy consumption, which is a testament to our utilities who, and our residents who've done good work on conservation. So we've doubled population, we've doubled vehicle miles, we've 50% more energy consumption. But here's a critical piece. Total emissions are down by over 70%, and that comes about by cleaner technology. Our cars and trucks today are cleaner than they were in 1990 because of progress, the things that we talk about, like having to check, the smog checks that we do, and the other, other, uh, rules that have come in place. So this is really a great story of what happens when we come together as a region and a state to tackle a problem. Here's the however. We still have more to do, and the first one we want to talk to you about is ozone, uh, not the stuff that we used, when I was a kid, learned about the, the layer out there that the sun was going to, you're going to get a sunburn because the ozone layer's gone away. This is about ozone down here on the surface that we breathe in, and, and it's a little different. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to someone who knows the science way better than me, and that's our environmental director, Matt Poppin, and he'll walk you through ozone, and we will, uh, have time at the end to answer questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Matt, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. So, as Ed said, we still have a, uh, we've made great progress in ozone. We've met the three prior EPA ozone standards, but our latest ozone standard, we're still struggling to meet, and we don't currently attain it. So briefly, how is ozone formed? This is a very simplified version, but you have emissions of volatile organic compounds, which are things from paints and solvents and also natural sources. Trees, vegetation give off volatile organic compounds. That in conjunction with oxides of nitrogen, basically tailpipe emissions, anything with the smoke stack is going to, any combustion source is going to produce nitrogen oxides. You combine that with ample some sunlight, and that produces ozone. Now, this is a very simplified version, there's lots of other factors that go into it, but this is the general chemistry of how ozone is formed in our region. So what's the challenge? What's the big challenge that we're currently facing? So if you see here, this line represents our ozone concentrations over time. So back in 1998, which is where that graph starts, you can see a steady decline in ozone concentrations over time, up to about 2017. There's been some ups and downs, that's due to weather patterns, we have a dip around 2008 with the Great Recession, um, but in general, we've had this nice downward trend in ozone concentrations. Also, these bars represent emissions that are produced by man-made sources. So these are all of the emissions from cars, from our industrial facilities. You can see over time, those have decreased as well. Uh, the light, the light gray are the nitrogen oxide emissions I talked about, and the dark are the volatile organic compounds. So both of the chemicals that come together to, to form ozone have decreased over time. But something has happened since 2017, and that link is now broken. So you can see since 2017, our average ozone levels have gone up. That's that green line. The darker green line is what we think ozone would be if we exclude the impacts of wildfires. So we know wildfires have increased rapidly over the last five to seven years. If we take those out of the equation, we think that's where, where the, uh, the ozone levels would be. But you can see, we still have reductions in emissions from man-made sources, even with all the incredible growth this area has experienced, we are still reducing emissions from man-made sources due to the better technology, cleaner fuels, all of those things. So the link is now broken, and this is a big problem. If local reductions in emissions aren't impacting ozone, what do we do moving forward? How do we address ozone? So this is the big problem that we're trying to investigate and address as we move forward. So overall, you can see that pattern of decreasing emissions. Conversely, ozone has increased. We're really trying to figure out what's going on and, and move forward as a, as a region. Another big problem is when you look at modeling, so we, we do modeling to try and figure out, where does this ozone come from? What are the sources that comes from? Well, both our modeling and the modeling that EPA does agree with each other, and what they say is, almost 80% of the ozone that impacts our region comes from outside of our region. It either comes from natural sources, or international sources, or interstate sources. So we can only really control about 20% of the ozone that impacts our region. And so as the standard has gotten stricter over time, it becomes harder and harder to lower ozone levels when we can only control 20% of it locally. So this is another issue that complicates us being able to meet this new standard. Like I mentioned before, wildfires have really impacted the, the ozone situation. It was pretty steady, so these are VOC emissions from wildfire, which is the main chemical that contributes to ozone. You can see, uh, the, the darker line is, uh, the total VOC emissions, and if you subtract out wildfires, you have the green line, but since 2017, you have this dramatic increase, right? Especially 2020, 21, and 2022. And these are the five surrounding states, um, because we know that it's not just the fires here in Arizona that cause ozone to increase, but ozone can be transported into our region, so the fires in California, Nevada, Colorado, Utah, all of those, uh, bring ozone into our region. Um, and we expect this trend to continue, unfortunately, into the future. So that increased wildfire activity is another thing we have to deal with as we try and address this standard. So what are the timeline constraints we are under as a planning agency? So as Ed mentioned, we're the lead planning agency. Our responsibility is to put a plan together to EPA that they can approve and says, "Yes, we think this region's going to meet the standard." And so we work with our partners at Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. And so we work with our partners at Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, Maricopa County, Panal County Air Quality Control District. They come up with the measures that get put into a plan and say, this is what we're going to do to meet the standard. But I want to walk through some very key dates with you that are both have occurred and are coming up so you can kind of know the timeframes we're under and some of the struggles we have. So back in November, EPA issued what's known as a finding of failure to submit. We couldn't put together a plan that said, hey, EPA, this is how we're going to make the standard. Our air quality data already said, hey, guys, you blew it. You went past the due date. So because of that, EPA issued this finding, and with that, triggers sanctions clock, sanctions clocks. So if we don't submit a new plan to EPA within a certain amount of time, sanctions will be triggered. And so you see the first sanctions date that's listed here is May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And what that is, is that's two to one offset. So what that basically means is, if you have a very large business and they want to expand, or if you want to bring in a new business, for every one ton of pollution they put into the air, they have to offset it by two tons. So they have to go and find offsets somewhere, which is very difficult to do. Those offsets just aren't available. So that's one major sanction we are seeking to avoid. And then two years from that date, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, EPA can withhold highway funding from the region, which would be a major blow to our transportation sector and the plans that we have for continued growth and development. So what are we doing to address that? EPA has given us two options. We can put together a brand-new air quality plan that says, hey, EPA, here's how we're going to make the standard. As long as we submit that to them before those sanctions clocks start, they'll turn off the clocks. EPA has also kind of worked with us and said, actually, if you just submit a couple pieces that you left out from your prior plan, if you get those up to us and we can approve those, we can turn off the clocks as well. We're still working through which direction to go with that, but we're definitely committed to getting a plan up to EPA to turn off those sanctions clocks. The other thing I want to mention here is you see this idea of a moderate area attainment date and a serious area attainment date. So what EPA does is EPA puts you into categories depending on how bad your ozone is. So currently, we're a moderate non-attainment area. And our attainment date is upcoming, August third, twenty twenty-four. We're not going to make that either. Our ozone levels are too high for that. So what that means is eventually, we're going to be reclassified as a serious non-attainment area. That comes with additional controls, additional Clean Air Act requirements that we have to do as a region. So, and we'll have three years to attain that standard. We're really hoping that we can put a plan together that can show attainment by that new attainment date of serious, so we don't just keep getting bumped up further into the future. Areas like California are in this category called extreme, right? We don't want to get to that situation like California where we're in extreme non-attainment. So that's why we're really working hard with our partners to try and put together a plan to address the ozone standard. And these are some of the big dates that are driving that process. So what's the big picture? So hopefully, eventually, attainment of this two thousand fifteen ozone standard will ultimately both support public health, the environment, and economic development. If we can get to attainment, that's the best possible outcome for everybody in the region. So as I mentioned, we're working very closely with ADEQ, Maricopa County and Panal County to develop a plan that's approvable. And so what does that do? If we submit an approvable plan to EPA, what does that accomplish? So it avoids the sanctions, including the potential loss of federal highway funding, and it prevents the further reclassification into the stricter categories where there would be additional regulation on business and industry. So that's why we're really focused on getting an approvable plan. Would you like me to stop for questions on ozone before I go to PM two point five? Or would you like me to continue on through two point five?
You know what? Let's stop right there and see if anyone has any questions. I know that's a lot of information, and I've heard it two or three times now from Matt, so I've had a little bit more time with it if you have questions. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Is anyone passing?
Does anyone attain the standard?
Any states, I mean, is anyone passing right now?
There are some areas that are attaining the standard, yes. But certainly areas throughout the Intermountain West have similar problems. So Las Vegas has a similar issue, a couple areas in Utah, Colorado. We all have kind of the same issue where our emissions are going down, but we are, we're not seeing that reduction in ozone. So we think it is due to wildfires. There could be some changes in chemistry. So there are other areas that have a very similar situation to us.
Does population have to have anything to do with that, I take it?
It can be a factor, right? Also, meteorology plays a big factor. Our valley and our geography kind of traps the pollution as well. If we didn't have that, the breezes could come through, and the ozone wouldn't accumulate, right? So there's several factors that play into it. But of course, population, you can get increased emissions from people. But as you see in our graphs, even with the amazing growth we've had here in population, our emissions have still come down.
Is there a city that comes to mind that's passing?
Yeah, I mean, there are several. I would say almost all of the Midwest is attaining the standard. I think the areas, obviously California is, there are several areas in California that aren't attaining the standard. The area of the East Coast has attainment problems. Texas has some areas that aren't attaining. And they're generally around the larger metropolitan areas.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, to go with your population question, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, is we're constantly building. And so constantly building is creating all of this in the air. And one of the biggest things for us is sitting in a bowl. Denver has the same issue. We sit in a bowl here in the valley. Councilmember Kaprowski's next.
Hi, thank you, Matt, for being here.
Yeah.
My question just relates to, why is ozone bad in the air? What are the effects to people or the community?
Right. And so EPA has published some literature that ozone can exasperate asthma. It can. And I'm not a public health expert on this, so this is not my area of expertise on it. But there are certainly public health effects associated with the standard. And so that's one of EPA's charges, is that they have to set the standard just based on public health. They can't consider costs. They can't consider impacts to businesses and industry. And so right now, the way the Clean Air Act is structured, they can only set the limit based on public health impacts.
And Councilmember Kaprowski to follow up. We have asked for somebody to come in and talk to the MAG Regional Committee on the public health issues when it comes to ozone, too. So I think that'll be something that we'll have as a presentation coming up in the probably near future.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Matt, you mentioned how eighty percent of the ozone in our region is out of our control. What are some of the strategies or reactionary measures that have been successful in reducing ozone in the environment?
Well, I think historically, the measures that have had the most impact have been EPA's standards on vehicles. That have, those have historically had the most impact. When we see just the fleet turnover from older cars going to newer cars, that has historically had the most impact. Unfortunately, we're not seeing that as much anymore in our area. So one of the things we have, recently, we had an opportunity to meet with Joe Goffman, the Assistant Administrator of the EPA. He came out to Arizona and met with a variety of groups. And we've asked for particular help in our area to address these kind of issues that are uniquely challenging to the Intermountain West. And one of those is this broken link between local emissions and rising ozone. We've asked for their expertise to examine, why is that occurring? Are there changes in chemistry? Are there changes in meteorology that are causing that? We've also asked for their help with evaluating, what is the exact impact from wildfires? What is the exact impact from international emissions? So we can have a better understanding of that eighty-twenty split. But I would say historically, to your question, the measures that have historically been the most effective have been just the kind of natural fleet turnover and the stricter vehicle standards over time.
But with the disconnect that you're showing in that relationship, it seems like it's unknown what other treatments could be done to reduce ozone.
Right. And that's the struggle we have, right? So when we come to policymakers and say, hey, would you be willing to adopt this new measure? It's understandable for them to go, well, why would I adopt something if I don't know the impact it's going to have, right? So we fully understand that. That's why we want to be able to explain the science better, have a better understanding of what measures really will provide a benefit to our region. I will say that Maricopa County and Panal County are still committed to looking at ways they can reduce emissions. Maricopa County has started a process of evaluating some new rules. And so they are still committed to looking at ways that can help. But yes, it is very important for us to understand what will have an impact because otherwise, it's very understandable, you know, it's hard to put together a plan. We don't want to just put together a paper plan that checks a box, right? We want to put together a plan that actually is, can make an impact and have a real impact on the region.
Thank you. Councilmember Torgeson.
I'm just curious. It's minus seventy-two percent on the one metric. Per capita, that's got to be incredibly low. If you did it by person, the growth in this area would have to look incredibly pushed down, lower number than would be expected in an established area. Let's say like you were talking Boston that doesn't have a big flux in population. Our population in the valleys doubled, yet we're down. I mean, per capita, is there any, is there any response from the federal government in the fact that we've got twice as many people and still down that much per capita?
I certainly think we make that argument when we say to them, and this area already has ninety-three control measures in place for ozone because we've been in non-attainment for those prior standards. So there are already a lot of measures in place. We certainly make that argument to EPA. Hey, look, we've had tremendous growth, tremendous economic activity, and the region has done a great job in limiting emissions even with that. And as you said, we're one of the fastest-growing areas in the country, and we're still being able to lower emissions locally. So that's certainly something we emphasize with EPA and say, hey, you need to work with us here. It's an important fact for them to acknowledge. Because the knee-jerk thing that people often say is, well, population went up, so therefore emissions have to go up, right? That's kind of the knee-jerk reaction, but it's not the case in our area.
So just, do you believe that all the municipalities have done whatever they can do economically, technologically, to bring those numbers down to address air quality? Or is there something that we would be lacking?
So, you know, we're still examining that. That's why we really want to get a better idea of the science. We really want to isolate what is going to have an impact. Prior to two thousand seventeen, it didn't really matter what we reduced, whether it was nitrogen oxides or volatile organic compounds. We could see benefit from both. We don't know right now if that's true. So we really have to examine that and see if, we could be in this, like I said, ozone is a very complex chemical reaction. So there, it's constantly being created and destroyed throughout the day and through the evening. And so there are some times when those emissions can contribute to more ozone. And then there are some times when those emissions actually eat the ozone and break it back down, right? It's constantly going back between ozone and oxygen, that one oxygen atom. And so we really need to understand the science better to figure out if there are additional local measures that can be impactful. I think overall, in the broad picture, we still think that if we are able to reasonably reduce emissions, that will be helpful. It won't be hurtful. But again, we want to make sure we understand that as we move forward in this planning process.
Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Matt. Thank you for your presentation and keeping it at a level that I can understand. So I really appreciate that. As I know, it's very complicated, so thank you. I'm really interested in the conversations surrounding wildfires and forest management. And I hope, I don't know if that's the correct word, but I see a lot of that happening now in the mountains when I go up there. I'm curious what our responsibility is to encourage that, to get more funding for that because that has a direct impact on us, not only from the forest, but when I'm driving to the mountains, the roadside. Because you see a lot of fires start because people pull off and there's weeds and things like that. So I'm not, I'm just curious, maybe it falls outside of our realm, but maybe we need to be advocating for more dollars, and what you think about that?
Yeah, I think the best resource for you to contact with that, I don't have a lot of information for you on that, would be the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. They are really the ones who are responsible for, and probably in conjunction also with the Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management. Certainly, if there are ways we can reduce forest fires, that will be helpful. But they would have more information than I would for you on that piece in terms of the efforts they're doing. I know just kind of observationally with my colleagues over at ADEQ, they do issue the smoke forecasts, and when they try and do the prescribed burns and things like that, and the efforts for forest clearing, they are very active in that sphere. So if that's something you're interested, I would recommend going to them for more information. But that's, in general, we, when we put the plan together, we can only address sources within the non-attainment area. We can't really address the sources outside of it. So there are wildfires that occur within our area, right? Certainly in Tonto and Hila, we've had some major fires, especially in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. But most of the fires that impact us are outside of our area.
Councilmember Buckley.
Thank you. So Councilmember Tilke asked part of my question. But the other part, what are you guys doing is, what can we do about the emissions from the forest fires? And are we working with like the California area? Do we know what comes over from them and how much?
Yeah. I think increased coordination interstate would be helpful for us to know. We, there is, there are a lot of data sources out there that tell us how many acres have been burned, when the fires are burning. And EPA does provide this regulatory relief where those wildfires are not supposed to count against us, right? We can't control it. We're supposed to be able to exclude those when we put together a plan saying, hey, this is how we've met the standard. But that's a very long and onerous process right now. So increased coordination can certainly be helpful, but also we're really asking EPA to work with us on that process, to help us streamline that process so we can exclude events that we have absolutely no control over and won't have control over into the future.
So how are we capturing what comes over from any of the states?
In terms of the ozone creates.
The ozone, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, we have models that can estimate the amount of emissions from those fires as well as the ozone that's created from that. So that is an input into our, what we call our boundary conditions when we do the modeling. So we do, there's an annual inventory available for those. So we do use that information when we model the impacts of ozone for our plan.
Okay. So are you leaving out those, you know, like your chart showed the fire line and then the regular line? Are you leaving those out then of the calculations that we're working with?
We're asking EPA for permission to do that, yes. And they have to, they have to kind of say, yes, you can do that. And so we're working back and forth with them to do that. But yes, that would be our plan. That's kind of the standard practice, is you remove those emissions, you remove those impacts, and you put together a plan saying, hey, but for the wildfires, we would have attained by this date.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, does the Midwest compete for the same highway dollars that we do?
You know, I am not an expert on how highway funding is distributed at all. I don't know if Audra would like--
Audra might be able to answer this.
Thank you.
In some ways, yes. I mean, there's a one pool nationally. There's a formula that's used to distribute it. So I guess in some ways, we're competing. There's some competitive grants. But the money we're talking about is given to us through formula. And so it's kind of hard to say we're directly competing always, but in some, in some portion of it, we are.
So you don't have to answer this if you don't want to. No comment will work with me. But are these unrealistic expectations away from the federal government to stack the deck to push more dollars to the Midwest?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's that. I, what it goes to, the Clean Air Act says there's one health standard that we have to meet. EPA has to set a standard for air, clean air, so that we're healthy. And the science says that that standard is such and such. And it's continually lowered as the science gets more sophisticated. To Ms. Kaprowski's question, ozone-- To Ms. Kaprowski's question, ozone attacks the lungs, and so very young people with underdeveloped lungs, old people with weaker lungs, and those of us with asthma or other, we're susceptible to it. So you see, clean, you know, it's an ozone day, please drive less, take the bus, fill up your car after, after dark because that's when the stuff comes out of the, you know, out of the, the filling station. It doesn't affect when it's not in sunlight. So there's those things. But it, it's really about that standard. And so EPA is, is enforcing this standard, and what we're trying to tell them is, we get the standard, we all, we all breathe the same air, right? We all, nobody says, I want dirty air. But we're trying to find with them is that, like, what's realistic for us to be able to deal with? So I think it's, I think EPA is not quite sure what to do with it either. That's as much as your question.
Does the Midwest have a separate or different expectation or do we all have the same?
No, we're, we're all the same. And to Matt's point, that's a little bit of the problem is our climate and environment creates ozone differently. I'm from, I'm originally from Kansas. I'll tell you, Kansas City doesn't have the problem. Well, it's because the wind's blowing it east. Well, so the people east of Kansas City are saying, well, why should we be punished for Kansas City? And, and we're saying, why should we be punished for California?
Right.
But though there's a national standard, but, but the impacts are different based on, we have a lot more sunshine. We, as Matt said, we're in a basin, it gets trapped here. And you'll see that with the, this next presentation on PM two point five. It's similar here. We, we, because of our climate and our geography and our, and our weather, we have a little bit different. And so that one size fits all does make it hard always to meet the standard uniformly.
Councilmember Bon Jivani, I will tell you, being from Missouri and Ed is a Jayhawk, there's a smell that comes from Kansas over into Missouri that has to be dealt with.
We were happy to pass it along to Missouri.
I was going to say, the first part of your question about an unattainable, unrealistic, that's the problem. And like Ed just said, that keeps changing. All of our cities, states, counties are not the same. And so all of us trying to meet that just doesn't work for some of us. Yeah. Councilmember Torgerson.
With Prop four hundred and how that works in regards to air quality, is there, does that go to road diets and things in the MAG twenty fifty plan or, tell me?
So thank you for raising the question about Prop four seven nine and that transit and so, so more efficient transportation is actually a huge benefit to the work Matt has to do for ozone attainment that we all have to do. And it's about making our freeways more efficient, it's about making our streets more efficient, it's about transit allowing people, if they choose to not drive their own car. All that stuff has the effect of lowering emissions. The less time a car is sitting in congestion or the fewer cars on the road, all those things kind of go, it's, it's really, it's lowering emissions. But that also comes by cars getting cleaner. So hybrid vehicles instead of fully gas vehicles, electric vehicles, those sorts of things all contributed because the biggest thing that we can do in this region is reduce the amount of stuff that comes out of all of our tailpipes. And, and Prop four seven nine gives the resources for us to be able to do that. And it's far and away, it's by making our freeways more efficient is, is the majority of them, our freeways and our streets more efficient is the majority of money in four seven nine.
But aren't the emissions markedly down?
Yeah.
I don't have the, how much further do you think you can drive them down?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, right? There's, there is, if, if every, if everything was electric, it would be way down. That's, who knows how long that's going to take. There's fuel sources like hydrogen. There's just simply vehicles getting more and more and more efficient, even when they're burning combustible fuels. All that's, is what's happening over time. And that's the reason why you're seeing our populations up, our vehicle miles traveled are up, our emissions are down, but what we have to have is even, even fewer emissions to keep, to keep on that path.
But I was part of a meeting, I think it was just GPEC, but they were discussing the fact you could take all the cars off the road and still not meet that standard. Is that correct?
That's, that's probably a little overstated, but it, that, that's to the point Matt had on the slide about, you know, a twenty percent is stuff we can control and eighty percent isn't. There, there's a point, and that's what we're talking to EPA about, there's a point at which you can't realistically reduce it much more. And if that connection between the, the decrease stuff in the air and the decreased ozone is broken, where it's going this way and this way, that's what we have to have EPA help with. That's what they have to come up with some other creative solutions for, because there, there may be just some point where we just can't find any more reductions. We think there are some more reductions. The county has a rule about composting facilities. I'm guessing you don't have big composting facilities in Gilbert, but you sometimes in the summer see the big fires along the Salt River where there, there are companies that have large composting operations and they catch fire and they eat. So there's some rules about that that will reduce the, the impact of composting on putting stuff into the air. So there's some places around the edges where we can continue to work. I don't want to say there's nothing we can do, but the, the point is really, we've got to have EPA's help on this from a national perspective. And that sort of speaks to Mr. Bon Jivani's point.
Councilmember Bon Jivani.
Thank you, Mayor. What did we learn from two thousand twenty when no one was driving? What did we learn in two thousand twenty, no one was driving?
That the roads were better.
That's a, that's a great question. And, and as you saw, we didn't see a big change in ozone.
Yeah, one of, one of the complicating factors with, and this is super technical, so I apologize upfront, is it's the fourth highest value in a year that determines that, what your standard is at, right? So if you just have four bad days and all the other days are clean, it doesn't really matter. It's that fourth day that gets you. And so what we really saw with two thousand twenty was it didn't help, it didn't affect that episodic day. It kind of lowered the overall average a little bit, but we had enough bad days that it didn't matter. We had enough wildfires in two thousand twenty as well that kind of overtook it. So two thousand twenty ended up being one of our worst pollution years. And so you get these counterintuitive stories, which makes air quality very frustrating, very hard to explain. So we did see, if you look on average, there was some impact. But to your point, yeah, we saw over a twenty, thirty percent reduction in the amount of vehicle miles traveled during that period, and it didn't have an impact on what the EPA judges us on, right? And that's very difficult to, to explain to people, and it's a very difficult fact to overcome. Yeah.
Thanks, Matt, for that part. Do you want to move on to the PM two point five?
Yeah, and I'll go, I'll go quickly through this and allow questions. And I appreciate your engagement and your interest in the topic. I hope, I hope, I hope it's helpful for you. So in addition to ozone, our second big challenge is PM two point five. And EPA just came out with this brand new standard in two thousand twenty-four and known as what we call PM two point five. These are the very, very super small fine particles. We like to show this graph, this graph, so the big long tube is a human hair, that's seventy microns. And then you see like fine beach sand, that's ninety microns. And then you get PM two point five, which you can see is the little pink dots on top of the big blue dots, which is PM ten. So that's how small these particles are. And so the danger, the public health danger is, this is one that is probably the most steadied in terms of public health. Our, our lungs cannot get rid of these particles. If they get trapped in our body, we don't have the ability to expel them like we can with dust. They're just too small. So over time, it can really be, can really impact folks, especially folks who have pre-existing conditions or other, or other health issues. So what EPA did is we had an annual standard of twelve, and they made it quite more stringent. They dropped it down all the way to nine. So in our region, we've got three monitors in Maricopa County that currently violate this new standard. You can see them located mainly here in the, in Western Phoenix. So you have West Phoenix, which is our highest monitor at ten point five, Durango Complex at ten point two, South Phoenix at ten point four. We don't have a monitor out here in the Gilbert region. The closest one would be Mesa. It's at six point eight. And then there's a monitor in Apache Junction, that's roughly about the same as well. So the East Valley in general meets the standard. And we have one monitor in Penal County that's violating called the Hidden Valley Monitor. This monitor is a little bit different than the ones, and this is a rural monitor, so it's impacted by different sources. Agriculture is one of the major sources that impact that monitor. So it's very different than the emissions that impact the ones in Maricopa County. So what causes PM two point five? There's some main sources of PM ten point five. So any combustion activity, whether that be fires or vehicle exhaust or exhausts from an industrial smokestack, any engine, any boiler, that's going to produce PM two point five. And then any activity that disturbs the desert soil. So construction activities, driving on unpaved roads, agricultural activity that stirs up dust, a component of that dust is going to be PM two point five as well. And as you all are probably really familiar with, during the winter time, PM ten emissions from wood burning and more recently fireworks can be extremely high. We find that our highest emissions of PM two point five are in the winter time and in the, and in the fall. So we have a real seasonal pattern to our emissions. So kind of on average, the PM two point five emissions in the winter and fall range between eleven to fifteen, so over the standard. Spring and summer were between five to seven. So it's, it's very much dependent upon the weather. One example we talk about for this impact on, on January first of this year, the West Phoenix Monitor had a reading of a hundred and eighty for PM two point five, which is twenty times over the standard of nine. And that was primarily due to consumer fireworks as well as residential wood burning. I'm sure you've gone outside on New Year's Eve and look at a street light and you can just see the smoke hanging. That's PM two point five. And so when you have a one day that's twenty times over the standard, you have to have twenty days at zero to get yourself back down to being, meeting this annual standard. So that's a big, a big issue. But I will say, we're engaged in activities with the state, with Maricopa County to better understand what the sources are. We're trying to put out more what we call chemical speciation monitors where they can actually take in a sample, and we, we take that sample to a laboratory, and the laboratory can tell you, oh, twenty percent of this is from vehicle exhaust, forty percent is from dust, thirty percent from wood burning, et cetera. So we'll have a better idea of what the sources are over time and it, because we will know that the different sources over time. A couple of dates for you to keep in mind. So within one year, February seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the states have to submit recommendations to EPA. So ADEQ is responsible for this process. They're going to look at the monitoring data, they're going to look at meteorology, they're going to look at emission sources, and they're going to make recommendations to the governor and say, this, these are the areas that we think aren't attaining the standard, these are the areas that we think are. So they'll make those recommendations to the governor. It's a public process, folks can comment on that, can comment on the technical process. We'll be involved in that process as well and, and watching it very closely. After the states submit their recommendations, a year after that, EPA then comes back and says, this is what we think are, are the areas that aren't meeting the standard. So it'll be a new non-attainment area. EPA will be looking at data from two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-four when they, when they make that decision. And most likely, we will have a new non-attainment area in Maricopa County and likely a new one in Penal. The data isn't coming down fast enough to, to meet these new standards. So if we're a new non-attainment area, what does that mean? We'll initially be classified as moderate, and our attainment date will be in two thousand thirty-two. We have to submit a plan to EPA within eighteen months saying, this is, this is what we're going to do to meet this new standard. What's in a plan? Again, that emissions inventory, here are the sources that cause PM two point five, here are the measures that we think are reasonable to try and meet the standard, here's how we can model the standard, here's how we can prove that we can make it. And if we don't make it, we have to have some measures sitting off to the side saying, if we don't make it, these measures will kick in automatically. That's what's known as contingency measures. So I wanted to go through that quickly to be respectful of your time. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions? Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
A simple question is, is this new standard unique to the current administration?
Is it unique to the?
Current administration.
I, you know, again, what they've told us is the standard is, is based on, on science, right? So they've, they've determined that this is the standard that's most protective of public health. I know it's being litigated, and it will continue to be litigated, and so we'll, we'll get the court's opinion on that. But what we've kind of said to folks who've asked similar types of questions is historically, we've seen lawsuits on the PM, lawsuits on air quality standards have not been successful. And that's largely because the Clean Air Act says the only thing you consider is public health. So I know there can be arguments about, well, we don't agree with the public health that's in there. So that's certainly something that, that folks can argue over. But in general, what we've seen over time is those lawsuits are not successful because the courts have upheld the Clean Air Act and said, yep, that's what it says. And so we, even though it's going to cost a lot or it might be impossible or very hard to attain, we don't have the authority to overturn it. So that's probably my, my best answer to that question for you.
Any other?
Want to add something?
I would just say, you know, as we wrap up, PM, PM is really a great example of the power of the region. Twenty years ago, we had a significant PM ten problem, and the region put significant effort into paving dirt roads, enforcing people not driving and parking on dirt lots, things we kind of take for granted today, and putting street sweepers out to, to gather the dust. And you still, I think the town of Gilbert probably has some street sweepers. Those street sweepers are funded by MAG because they're part of our effort to, to clean the dust out of the air. And I think we could all say, excuse me, I think we could all say that the air appears cleaner today because we've really attacked the dust problem. This is another one where we're going to have to do similar efforts for it, but we've had, we've had a track record in this region of successfully doing that. So I'm hopeful we have ways to, to deal with it because we've done it in the past.
Thanks, Ed. Councilmember Kaprowski.
My question relates a little bit to what you just mentioned, Ed. With the PM two point five non-attainment, is this new non-attainment because of the adjustment in the number? Has MAG ever been in non-attainment for PM two point five before? And what are the resources or funding that then comes to the region to help address the non-attainment?
So I'll take the first part, which is, yes, it kind of goes to the vice mayor's question. The standard was lowered by EPA. So we're, we're at the same thing we were last year, it's just now they've lowered the standard, and so we're in, we have three monitors where, where we're out of compliance. But Matt can, can answer the rest of that question.
Yeah, so we've never been in non-attainment, the Maricopa County has never been in non-attainment for PM two point five. There is a small non-attainment area around that Hidden Valley Monitor for the, for the daily standard. So there's two standards. There's a daily standard and an annual one. We're talking about the annual one here that they lowered. We currently have a non-attainment area down there, but they're meeting the standard. They now are meeting it, so there's no additional measures that need to be done for the daily standard. And, and largely the measures that are helpful are largely the measures that were done to control dust. That's a big help. And then also the measures, the vehicle measures as well that reduce the emissions from tailpipes, those have been helpful as well. But in general, this is going to be a new non-attainment area.
And so similar to the PM ten non-attainment, we do expect that there will be additional funding or resources and strategies that MAG will encourage member agencies to do?
So we don't get additional funding from EPA.
Okay.
For, for being designated non-attainment area. Now, what we can do is we have the congestion mitigation and air quality funds, which is a portion of the transportation funds. And so we have used those to fund street sweepers before. That's one of the things we do. We allow cities to replace their street sweepers because we believe it, it helps. So there are certain funds we can use that way, but in general, EPA does not provide you funds when you, when you become a non-attainment area.
And the C-MAG funds doesn't increase either? It's, that's set on a different standard?
I think that's, there's a different formula for those funds unrelated to non-attainment.
Okay, thank you.
So they lower the standards, but you don't get any funding to maintain, to help maintain them? Yes. Any other comments? It's unfunded mandate from the federal government. We love when they do that to us. Yes.
Matt, is there no way we can put like tents over those monitors?
A big fan.
Big fan.
Right.
There's an attainment fair, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Matt, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. And again, congratulations on your new position at MAG. You've been great to listen to and to work with. And Audra, thank you for being here tonight. And Ed Zirker, of course, as always, great to see you. We appreciate you coming out and, and thank you to the council for being so engaged and asking so many really great questions. This is a great topic, and I thought it was important to bring out because again, there's a lot of misperceptions. We're getting those emails at MAG, at me as an We're getting those emails at MAG, me as an executive board member, a regional committee member and a transportation board member. I get the emails from the residents that think we are forcing people out of their cars and that is certainly not true. That is not the case. I'm never giving up my car. So that will, you know, somebody will have to take my keys away when I'm old and gray and can't drive anymore. But that, I am not willing to do that and I would never mandate that on anybody. So thanks for coming out and joining us this evening. We appreciate you. See you soon, I'm sure. Okay, that finishes our two items for our study session. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting and our next meeting starts at 6:30.